Special council meeting is called to order at 6:00 p.m. President Council, President Chris Rishan, Councilmember Kevin Charbonneau, Councilmember Paul Curtis, Councilmember Rick Arthur Chase, Treasurer City Clerk James Johnson, City Manager Jonathan Delabre. Our treasurer's appointees are here as well. And all good? Okay. Before we get to the second item on the agenda, happy birthday to former Mayor Ben Palm.
Really?
It was. See, I'm an old guy, I see photoshops like Mr. President. Okay. The second item is additions, deletions to the agenda. President Rishan?
Okay.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes, thanks.
Councilmember Arthur Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Nope.
Next item on the agenda, tax anticipation note, the line of credit with an anticipated vote. So just to bring it, to get the discussion started, we said that we would come back after the last council meeting to discuss the line of credit, what the amount, if it was $2 million, if we were going to be able to do that and have a discussion on that, what terms were the need for it. And there were some questions asked about cash flow projections. And I know that this is a timeframe, so, yeah. But I'm going to, so who would like to be?
I'll handle this one.
Okay, you've already spent any time.
Sure. So I will share, just for the council, I have not 100% finished the cash flow. I've got roughly probably 16% of it done, so bear with me. In my prior municipality, this took roughly two months to do, and I had less than a week to do it. So again, I'm not 100% there, but again, bear with me. So basically, a cash flow projection, you take on the left-hand side is a printout from Nemrick that shows all of our various line items that we have approved in the budget. And then I took those numbers and spread them out on the months that we have to try to get a more accurate projection of which month are we going to need the cash flow the most versus expense and revenue. Again, some of these I'm still working on, but then these tie back to, you put in a starting balance, the revenue and expenses, and it kind of breaks down which month, in which months we need that money the most. So in our annual town report, we've approved a budget of $7,144,343. So you can see I have almost all of the revenue accounted for in this spreadsheet. I'm still about halfway on the, a little over halfway on the expense side, but as this is starting to fall out, you can see in the negatives in which months we're starting to see a need for money. So really, that kind of timeframe, end of the summer right before taxes come in in November, is where we're seeing that kind of shortfall in the cash flow. Again, it's tough to Rick's question last time and to Mayor Sullivan's question, how much money, right? I can't answer that question at this moment. I can tell you that with the numbers I currently have in, we're roughly half a million short in October. Again, I don't have all of the expenditures put in, so that number is surely to go up as we start to increase those expenditures. Another thing to note is this is only based on the general fund, and this is not done with water and sewer only in the general fund. I don't have 100% of this in, but I would say another couple of these.
So just for, I was understanding, so you went into the true accounting system?
Into Nemrick, and then you export a budget status.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same source of where these numbers came from.
And I did verify with Jim this morning that these numbers do true up to the warning that was presented to the voters at town meeting day, so, and that the revenue and expenses match, so we raise only enough taxes to cover our expenses after that non-tax revenue is brought in. So those numbers do true up to the 7.1 million, and then we're just trying to figure out based on, for example, we don't operate the campground year-round. So really, those campground expenses and revenue are within a six-month period. Same thing for summer maintenance with our public works, winter maintenance, you kind of start to separate some of those based on when the expenses and revenue will come in. Some of them are easier than others. For example, my salary is most likely spread very evenly across 12 months of the year, so you're just taking that number and dividing it evenly, but some of them you actually do have to go in. You know, for example, V-Trans pays us quarterly for our road miles. So you take that number, you divide it by four, and so it's starting to give us an accurate projection of when are the expenses occurring and when is the revenue going to come in so that we can accurately cover our expenses.
Any questions to start here? I'm looking at your council member.
I've got lots of questions. I don't want to dominate.
No, dominate. This is your shot.
No one ever says that.
Dominate. This is your shot.
So first thing I want to say, Jonathan, is this is exactly what I was hoping for. So thank you.
Yep.
It feels like a start in the direction.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know there's only so much we can do with it tonight, given how little we, you know, that there's still a lot of information that's not in there. But can you go back to that other, the summary, cash flow summary page for us? So if I understand it correctly, what's really happening is you've put in a lot more of the expenses between now and October, and a lot fewer expenses following October. Is that correct?
So based, the way Nemrick breaks it out is the top half is revenue and your bottom half is expenses. So I started with the top and just started to work my way down, and I just haven't made it all the way through my expenses.
Right. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, as I look at those initial numbers, which I know we can't depend on yet.
Yep.
You know, in November, I see we jump from a negative 500 to a 2.2 million surplus, right? And so what I'm trying to determine is, is that because there's a big infusion of cash?
Correct. Taxes are due November 15th.
I see. So I'm saying, and now I'm looking the revenue column, so you're seeing 3.15 due.
Correct.
And that's, so, so it may be, in fact, that that's where we're going to see it get better again until spring.
Correct. And you can see right, in April, kind of before that last installment, we're starting, and as I add more expenses, I anticipate that $800,000 number is going to.
Dwindle dramatically.
Dwindle dramatically. So you're seeing this, right? As taxes come in, we're flushed with money, we expend, we use our expenditures, and then we need that other payment. I think what would solve this is four tax payments a year. I know we've got.
Yeah, let's get into the solutions after.
You get into the solutions, but.
But let's just hit the questions first, and then we'll hit all the solutions and options.
So when you say that water and sewer is not here, because this is a municipal budget, what have you learned in your first, what, three months, four months on the job about what the actual impact of water and sewer is on this cash flow projection? Like, I know that theoretically they're separate, but I'm beginning to get an inkling that in practice, they haven't been entirely separate.
In practice, I think we're, yeah, we're pulling from general fund, fund water and sewer. And I think we as a council, right, you as a council, have discussed this multiple times of raising the rates, right, and getting back to where utility payments for the water and sewer cover those expenditures.
So part of, part of what we're going to need to get to in order to have numbers we're confident in is a similar projection that shows what happens with water and sewer as well?
Probably.
Right? Because it has the potential to have a significant impact.
Correct. And I think then you can really make the determination or, because you're not bringing in property taxes for your water and sewer, you're bringing in utility.
Right, where are the utility payments showing?
And they show, those are already quarterly, so with those quarterly installments, are we running a deficit? And if we are running a deficit right now, currently, we're borrowing from general fund. And I know, you know, Jim has a write-up for that that has been provided, but that's what's happened, right, is the rates weren't set accurately enough, so we're borrowing from general fund. I think at the end of the day, you're right, a similar cash flow analysis should probably be done with water and sewer to verify those utility payments are where they should be. And we did raise them once, but my assumption is that you're going to need to continue to do that until they're even, right? That's the goal, is that your revenue and expenditure lines net to a zero, so that we're raising enough money, whether it's property taxes or utility bills, to accurately cover our expenses.
And the numbers, and correct?
I'm packing it down. I'm a computer whiz, so.
It's okay. Yeah.
You go.
Treasurer, this is as of June 30, 2024. We still have that, how water fund owes the general fund 351,401, right? With the sewer fund owing a million, 224,331, totaling 1,575,732, correct?
Correct. The water and sewer funds combined, this is over a period of years. Owe the general fund a million and a half dollars.
And that's as of June 30?
This is accumulating, year after year, after year after year. And like Jonathan said, this has been brought up many times in the past, so everybody should be aware of it. So if you follow this, Jonathan, you make copies of this, if people want them. The general fund, the top, so we budgeted $6,415,512, budgeted. We actually took in $6,928,403, so we had a surplus income of $512,000. But on the expense side, we expended $6,888,296, which is 472,784, over budget, so we only had $40,000 revenue over budget. This is coming from the trial balance. Okay? Now, if we go down to the total revenue and total expenses, 11,726,605, that is the total revenue that we took in. School revenue, general fund revenue, the whole work. The expenses are 11,926,577, which includes the school appropriations we pay out through the nod to the general fund budget. Okay? So you had almost, to the penny, $200,000 of expenses, more expenses than the revenue coming in. So now if you drop down to answer Rick's question, so Rick's question, water and sewer. So in the revenue, 1,798,271 was budgeted for revenue. We only collected 1,418,90, which is $378,081 less than we should have collected. That's because the rate's not keeping up with the revenue. On the expenses, the budget amount is the same as the revenue. We spent 1,765,701, instead of underspent the expenses by $32,000, but that equates to $345,811 that the general fund had. Same thing with water. Water's a little better. We budgeted 1,015,703. We collected 1,184,271, so we had a little over 168,000 over budget on the revenue. But on the expense side, we spent 229,000 more than we took in. If you add those two together, we're up at $606,471 at the water and sewer fund over the general fund. Plus, there's about $220,000 in uncollected taxes this year so far. So now you're up to $826,000, just about where we are on that.
And salaries, we haven't, the city manager hasn't had the time yet to go in there. He's done the data collection for the first quarter, like we said we were going to do for real time. And so once we get that spreadsheet, we can actually see what percentages of the salaries need to be changed and where they're going and hit, so that's something that also is needed. And at least, thank you, we've got.
Got the data.
We've got the data. Okay, and that's, that's important, so, good.
Phil, is there any questions on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So this should be obvious to me, and I'm sorry it's not. What period of time are we talking about here where you're showing budgeted versus actual?
This is a pro-month.
For what pro-month period?
July 1, 2023, 6/30, 2024.
Okay, so this is basically what happened last year.
Correct. And it's not, you're going to say, not just last year, the year before, the year before.
Okay, so this shows the cumulative total?
No, that's just this year past.
That's what I'm asking, okay.
A million and five something is the cumulative total.
That's the cumulative.
What the treasurer's saying is that the issue is being rolled over.
I understand.
And that's why I've been here for years, trying to get the city to rate the water and sewer rate. We did it last time, but like Jonathan said, I think it's going to happen more than this.
More questions?
I'd love to hear from her people, really. I've got questions, but I'm.
Just the protective independent may bank, potential home for taxes as well, or is that just not?
So what we had, it includes, we budgeted $10,000 for interest in delinquent and $33,000 for penalty? Yes, penalties. And I did spread those evenly across 12 months. So if we get more than that, again, an ask to the revenue side, but that was the budgeted number in the penalty. So you're right, it doesn't show this.
How far down is this, Phil?
900 lines.
Okay.
So again, you can see here, like I haven't, there's a couple miscellaneous revenue, like a cellular one lease that I was, you know, working with Jim to get, haven't got it. Couple of lease reports. But I've started in on Crowdy Beach, and I haven't finished the docs yet. There's the revenue. The city manager, I did mine, those were pretty easy, across 12 months. Treasurer, same thing. So I mean, I still have a couple, yeah, but. But yes, it does show the interest in penalty for delinquents.
I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly apologize to your spouse for the fact that you haven't been home for more than three hours of time.
It's okay.
I can't imagine I could have. It's an important document. It is an important document.
Any more questions?
No, we don't.
Any questions?
This is 606,000 at the bottom, what is, what?
606,471.
Missed what that was right here, so it's.
But let's let Jim, hello, guys. Thanks. Treasurer?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
It's okay.
That is the, should be the sewer and the water, the oldest expenditure. And the general fund. If you add all those three together.
All three.
Correct. Should come with 606.
All right.
Okay. Councilor Charbonneau, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions about our current cash position. So again, I'm so new at this that I don't feel like I'm, I'm practiced at understanding the reports that I'm reading. So can you give us a rough idea of what our balance sheet looks like as of June 30? Like what assets do we actually have, if any?
Well, I ran this today, we're one week into the new year.
Yep.
Okay. We got $571,500 in check.
In what?
In the check. That's what we have in the bank.
Okay.
Can you say? And this was reconciled as of when? Still June?
In case you reconciled it last.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody say something.
Yeah, I couldn't hear the word you said. 571,000 in what?
5,487, that's in the bank. That's what we have in the bank.
Thank you. Thank you. Jimmy, we're done. Flacking me down, so.
Sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay. Go ahead.
At the time, Rick, we still owe 800,000 on the line of credit for last.
Yes, so we're showing $500,000 in, in a bank account, but we have, and we have a liability of.
800,000.
800.
Now, I could take 500,000 of that and put it on there.
I'm not quibbling, I'm just trying to figure it out.
Okay, that's why the line of credit is important, to get that. I can take this 500,000, or most of it, put it on there, but it's still going to be 300,000 short for the year. That's why I need a line of credit. The city needs the line of credit to get to zero.
What happens? Can I keep going?
Yes, please.
What happens when we get grant money in advance as opposed to grant money that's only reimbursable for expense? So let's say, I'll just use for an example, the 450,000 remaining dollars in the Walmart funds from however many years ago, right? I understand there's still that asset that exists. Is that sitting in an entirely separate bank account somewhere? So when you talk about the 500, whatever, $80,000, that does not include the fact that we should theoretically at least also be sitting on any grant money that's come in and is committed for designated projects.
Right, that 571,000 is only general fund checking. It's not any of these special funded money state measures.
So when special money comes in, again, let's just stick with the Walmart money as an example, right? There's this, it started out at $600,000, as I understand it. 150,000 of it went to support Newport City downtown development over five years, $30,000 a year, right? So you, if I asked you to print a printout, you could show me all of the activity in that particular designated account. Whether or not those funds are segregated, you can show me the income and the expense on an account like that.
Mm-hmm. And. At the end of the year, we had 454,000 in that account. And if money should come in, it doesn't go into the general fund, it goes right to that account.
Absolutely, right. And do you have a rough idea of how many, how much there is sitting in those various accounts at this point?
I'd say there's well over a million dollars if you add them all up.
Just designated monies that have come in and not been expended?
They're designated for certain things, like you can't.
Right, that we can't touch.
You can't use it for the general fund.
And so we do not have a practice, as if I'm understanding you correctly, of borrowing money out of those designated funds to, to manage cash flow?
No, not unless the council authorized it. And they, to my knowledge, the only one that's ever authorized, bad Tom's not here, was the Coventry Street Fund, and that was a couple of years ago. Because we've never got money. We haven't repaid Coventry Street, rebuilt the whole thing from the Main Street all the way up to Route 5. But those funds are all separate. It's got nothing to do with where we are in the bank.
Any questions?
Jonathan and I had a talk about an interest-bearing, you had a better word than I have, an interest-bearing checking account. Where the idea is that you would give some of the money you're spending on your line of credit back in the interest. Do we have that yet, or are we working on it, or why don't we have it?
General fund isn't a fair name.
Is?
Yep. Not much, but it's a fair name.
It's a trend. Can I speak to that?
Yes.
So I believe it's currently set up as just a regular checking account, which has very little interest. What I was referring to as an ICS arbitrage arrangement with the bank, that's different than just an interest checking. So basically, we would move it, when we got the line of credit, we'd move it all into this arbitrage that would build interest. When we got the school payments, it would continue to build interest, and Jim would pull money from that, as he does the line of credit, into our checking account to cover bills. That interest-bearing, at least last year in Cambridge, covered the interest that we would have borrowed on, a 1.75 million dollars.
Exactly, I remember the coverage. So what do we do to get that? What has to be done?
You just have to talk to the bank, is my understanding.
Who would do it?
I think it'd be typically Jim, as the treasurer.
Can that be looked into?
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to talk about. That's one of them definitely that should be looked into. And then the bank has also made a suggestion to the treasurer that instead of borrowing 1.7 and then coming back and asking for more and asking for more, that the borrow be the 2 million, and that the draw be up to that 1.7 and anything above and beyond to get to the 2 million be authorized. And then just let them know, and they can see that that happens. So that was a suggestion by the bank. The bank also said it may, we might want to consider a deficit note at what point in time, or this, you know, the arbitrage situation, or both. And so those are discussions to be had after we make a decision on the borrowing, the borrowing amount, and then all of that can go forward. Jim can get that information, and once he gets it over to us, that's a simple task for the council to just authorize, or, you know, I could authorize and we could authorize if I'm here, and one. That, because we've already had that authority to do stuff. And so now we just have to make a decision on how we would like to move forward with the loan itself, to see how we can go forward. And Jim, if you wouldn't mind, you had given me the information, if it was a 10-year note, it would be like a $20 increase, do you remember that?
Or if it was over time, right, if we wanted to do something? 1.5, yeah. Yeah, if you borrow the 1.5 for 10 years, I think if you divide it by the four payments of, or 1,900 water and sewer account, you have $25 a quarter.
Right.
Over 10 years, five years, it's about 45, almost double that.
So that's another thought to consider also, Jim, I think.
Yeah, so with that 1.5, just to be kind of bring down the debt so that we can have water again?
Well, that certainly would help because we wouldn't be paying water. In addition to that, the rates are going to have to go up. So we wouldn't, the general fund wouldn't be paying water and sewer expensive, expensive. Now, in years past, we may have had some kind of, I call it a surplus, or they call it a reserve fund, but that ended, okay? And if you look at the trial balance and the liability, that 1.577, that's your reserve fund, that's been spent on water and sewer over the years, theoretically. So if we're going to do that, first of all, I'd like them to sign the 2 million and do the 1.7 and get operation to the next three, so it can get going. Secondly, you're going to have to raise the rates again, unfortunately. And thirdly, I would suggest that the water and sewer funds borrow that 1.5 million over a certain number of years, pay the general fund back. Me, that's the only way we're going to get back to zero. Jonathan and I have talked about this, back to where we should be.
I actually have a question or clarification about that. So if the water and sewer rates are adjusted to be what they should be, would that eliminate, like, this discrepancy between expenditure?
No, all it does is get you up to even.
It gets, but it gets you to even.
To this point, it doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration the 1.5, or you have to borrow that money to pay it back.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. So if we, okay, let me think about what order I want to ask this in. We all just swallowed pretty hard about a month and a half or two months ago, and agreed to raise the rates. You tell me, but I think my memory is that it was close to 50% for water.
25.
It was 25% for water and 13% for sewer? Sorry that I don't have these numbers, don't I?
25%.
I think it's 25%. 25%.
So.
The mayor asked me for an opinion long ago, and I suggested.
You suggested?
50.
50. Which is to say that you weren't confident when we raised them to those new rates a couple of months ago, that that was actually going to manage the deficit, and we weren't going to continue to be in deficit spending?
Now, to, well, to be perfectly honest, I included the depreciation in it. And if you take that out, it went to 25%. If you take that out, it went to twenty-five percent.
Right.
But I think you're going to have to do it twenty-five percent again, again, again.
The treasurer was pretty clear that that was just to get us back on to momentum of making decisions. So there was never any indication by the treasurer that that was just going to be break even.
But this was enough. I understand.
You have not included one point five.
And clearly, for me, this is where I begin to hit the wall on my learning curve, right? And a year from now, I'll understand it better, I guarantee you. But what I'm trying to figure out is what's the end game here? What's it going to take for us to get to the point where we're actually managing our expenses and bringing in enough income? Because I'll be honest, when I hear you describe, well, if we borrowed one point five, we could pay back the general fund, if we haven't managed the deficit spending, it reminds me an awful lot of plenty of folks that I'm close to who have had a high credit card bill and borrowed, taken money out as a second loan on their, a second mortgage on their home at a lower rate of interest to pay off their credit card bill without addressing the underlying issue, which was their spending and income in the first place. So if we're not addressing the spending and income problem, then I'm loathe to approve a one point five million dollar expenditure to bring us back to break even because we're quite likely to be back in this hole again in three or four years, if that will.
That's why we have to raise the rates more than one time, okay? We typically bill on average a four hundred and thirty thousand a quarter, somewhere similar in that area, right? You should be billing another two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per quarter to break even with it, to bring in the revenue we budget. Of course, you budget the extends to match the revenue or the revenue to match the extends, but you're not bringing in enough. And it does hold the general fund matter none of that.
I believe that with this caveat. I have yet, in the four months that I've been on council, gained any confidence that the water and sewer budget is not carrying inappropriate expenditures from the general fund over the last however many years, four, five, six, eight years. I don't know how long, right? But I want to know which expenses belong where in order to better understand what the real cost of water and sewer is. In other words, I don't want to just say we've got to keep raising water and sewer rates if some of those go in the general fund.
And to that, if I might, that's exactly what we are looking at. That's why we're doing a real-time look at salaries and we're pulling the expenditures and we're not doing just estimates or weighted averages anymore. We're going in, everybody is looking to put that together so we can have actual numbers.
If I weren't busy making the city manager crazy for a week with coming up with something else.
That's exactly right. So please stop.
No, I hear that and I understand the challenge. I really do.
No, no, no. It's exactly what we're doing. And so that is what's going on and the expenditures are being looked at and salaries to do the real-time salaries was very important. It's something we said back in March or whenever it was, that that's what we were going to do and we were going to do this particular quarter and then we were going to do the next quarter till we had the actual annual numbers of where the salaries should be. And that's what's going on. And now we have the ones through June 30th and city manager just needs to be able to put that into the spreadsheet so we can take that and look at that and look at that.
Thank you.
In my regulation, salary is the only, any question on water.
Right. But we're still looking at the other, we're going to look, he's pulling the expenses as well. But the salary was the big chunk of that. The big question was the salaries. And so, because that was just done for years through estimates, like a rule of thumb estimate, whether it be thirty percent, then all of a sudden it might have been forty percent or fifty, whatever it might be, it got to the point where we need to know at this stage what is really going on and what's happening. Yes.
Thank you.
I'm sure there is equipment in there that is shared, public works in water and sewer. You would make a backer, for example, sweep the streets with it and.
Some should be allocated about that.
Right, and that's what we need to see.
And there's the added difficulty of when there's more meters in the city, our revenues will drop down again. So trying to predict almost what that increase would have to be as well. Absolutely.
And that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
And I think it's tough because, yes, we have a more accurate data on the usage, but I would agree with you that the revenue is probably going to decrease.
So if I could press there a little bit, Jonathan. I'm trying to figure out, like, what's the, what's reasonable, having never been in municipal government before myself? Like, what should residents expect to spend on their water and sewer bill? And are we quickly approaching the point where we're going far beyond that? And if so, why? Like, what else could be going on there where we're, I mean, clearly what's happening at that point is we're spending more than we're taking in. And if we're, if the expectation is somehow, like, if our rates are higher than Burlington's rates of Chittenden County, right? I'd be interested in knowing what's going on in that calculation.
So I think before you can say what's reasonable or we need to have the numbers. And then we need to look at the numbers and then see for our population and what happened historically. So whether or not Burlington is higher or lower than us, we don't know what Burlington over, what their councils did over the past ten years. So we're stepping into a different history. So we have to look at Newport specific and then make those decisions based on the history. And then we need to see, and I would say not what's reasonable, but what might be more affordable.
Fair enough. I appreciate the distinction you're making.
And I think that's where you were going.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to get to.
What's affordable and that's what we need to look at.
I think historically, we've been putting on the whole land.
Right, that our rates haven't been raised.
Haven't been, haven't kept up the most.
Haven't kept up with the main expense. I think that's quite possible and I'm looking forward to seeing numbers that tell us.
And I would rather look at the past years prior to all the COVID and prior to everything and see that and compare it to that to see where reasonableness and affordability and then we can project on forward.
So I ask you a question. How long is it going to take before we get back to even raising the rates? I think it's going to take another two or three increases just to raise that difference of what we're getting, what we should be. I can't tell you the exact date of that.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No. More, sir. I just, I hate throwing in budget numbers where there's a huge increase. So we do have step increases to get to where we need to be, not be referred by name.
And that's our call. Councilmember, do you have anything?
So the water and sewer look like four hundred thousand dollars a year loss. And they take the negative from sewer and the negative from water.
Yeah, this year.
Yep, for the time period we're talking.
If you go back, some years have been more than that.
Yep. I've heard you in the past. So what, to get to that four hundred thousand dollar negative, to make that zero, what increases needed to get to that number? And we can do them by the quarter or by the year? I don't care.
That's something, something we have to figure out.
Are we not there yet?
No, so that's a separate tax rate that we have to go in and calculate. Once we have all these numbers, then we'd have to first go in and say, what is the actual rate? And that's a different calculation.
So based on this time period, Jim says we're four hundred thousand dollars negative for this year, right? That's going to change a little because new rates take effect.
Yeah, September will be a little higher rate.
So I'm just curious what, and I agree with Chris, that we can't do it all at once. But if we borrow one point five million, that raises it a hundred dollars a year. And then I'm wondering what, what number does away with a four hundred thousand a year? But you're telling me we're not quite there?
I mean, we have an estimate.
Comes in, we'll know how much extra we're getting with the rate increase. And we can take that average of four hundred thousand and expect to see that much more increase maybe two or three more times or something like that before we get to the four hundred thousand dollar level.
I think where the treasurer is suggesting is though, where a president might agree is it would be like four times over the year.
You could fix it one way or another.
Well, right.
I don't think you want to do that.
But we can fix it one way. Right, so like probably four, like times.
But if you.
No, no, please.
If you only do it once a year, if we raise it twenty-five percent each year and we wait another year to do it, well, then you're, you have seventy-five percent of that which has fallen. You're still falling behind by, you know, seventy-five percent. That should be fifty percent and twenty-five, they would be.
Yeah, because you'd be thinking at least five years by the time you even get to any point where you can be realistic and then your budgets change anyway, so.
And Jonathan's saying by that time, everybody would be either and the season's going to go down.
Councilmember, do you have any questions? You look like you're thinking.
When did the significant deficits occur? It hasn't always been that way. Hasn't ever been in the last.
I did all that once. I should have brought it up. I've got it somewhere, but I think I went back to two thousand and sixteen, I think. And back that far, there was a deficit. You know, first it was small and it got bigger and bigger and bigger.
And when we sat down, we did go to two thousand and sixteen. That's where it went.
And that's the last time before this time that the rates were raised. The rates until this September bill, the rates hadn't been raised since two thousand and sixteen.
Wasn't there a surplus?
Not a lot of sewer, shouldn't be surplus to begin with, but there certainly has been a deficit every year for a lot of years.
What's driving the, the massive increases each year?
They're just not building up. A lot of sewer bills that get the revenue where we're supposed to be getting. Supposed to be getting one point seven in, for example, in the sewer, we only get one point four, something like that.
So that the interest payments combined with like each year the inflation rate?
Well, I don't think there's been any increase. Hasn't been any increase for inflation, not in the water and sewer. Hasn't been any increase period until this last time.
The salaries must have increased.
Oh, yeah. Doubt about it. Look, for a long time, we've come in every year and said, you've got to raise the rates, you've got to raise the rates. Chris can attest to that, but there wouldn't be something to that. And I'd say one of these days it's going to come, jump up and bite you. And here it is.
So I think the big question now before the council is, are you ready to bring a motion to increase the line of credit with the caveat that the bank would increase it, however, ask for the authorization from one point seven up to the two million every time that money was used, unless you want to do a different motion? But I think that's what I'm hearing and you want.
Yeah, there is, there's already been a motion for one point seven.
No, but I'm saying for two now. You need it for two million, but with the understanding.
They would like it for two, but they will monitor it.
They will monitor it at one point seven and if there's any draw, then we'd have to come.
They'll come back to you.
Right. So, and I guess for everybody's understanding at this table, if it doesn't happen, what happens?
If it doesn't happen, I've got five hundred and seventy thousand dollars paid bills until water and sewer comes in September. That's what happens. And I can tell you every two weeks, just to pay it all alone is about a hundred and
This has nothing to do with the one point five?
I mean, you don't have to borrow one point five. But if you don't, at one point five, you're going to continue to grow until you get the water reach where you're going to break even. But by that time, you're going to be over the general fund, two million, one and a half million.
Can you tell me what the length of time is on this line of credit? Are we talking through June 30th of next year? So we won't have to come back to this part of the conversation?
Not unless.
Unless we.
Unless you use more than one point seven.
Well, except we will come back to this part of the conversation. We will not.
Understood, right.
So it's not going to just die. Okay, and that's what everybody needs to understand. It's not like, okay, fantastic, we did this, stop the work. The work's going and continues. We have the answers.
You have to keep operating. Can't stop operating.
And I think to Rick's point, you're going to do a cash flow, not just for general fund, but the water and sewer as well. I would agree.
There's a couple of other ways to that.
And also be aware that this, like I gave you, the audit has not been done yet, okay? So the water and sewer could turn out to be more. Could turn, probably not, probably, but it could turn out to be less. Here, here, the last week in July. But the public, if we won't get the audit back until October, October.
Right, but we can work with the auditors to go to feel for what's going on.
They can tell you.
Plus, we'll have also some real-time numbers at that point in time as well to do to the auditors to say, here's what we've actually figured out. And so, which they wanted for years, they wanted that to happen. So they'll be kind of working with us on that as well.
I'll dig that out where you want it. I'll go back to the logic to show you that.
I remember seeing those numbers that you kept. So just to be clear, I'm moving toward the obvious answer, which is we don't have a choice. We have to create cash flow. So I'm getting there. I guess one of my questions is, we've been focused on the water and sewer, which represents, by your calculation over the last year, two-thirds of our deficit. But that leaves a third of our deficit, roughly two hundred thousand dollars, out of the municipal fund. And so I just want to ask similar questions about what's going on in our municipal budget and whether or not the budgeting for fiscal year forty, twenty-four, twenty-five has addressed the two hundred thousand dollar deficit that existed from twenty-three, twenty-four? Or are we going to, are we similarly running up a deficit in this fiscal year in the municipal budget?
Well, that two hundred thousand dollars includes, like I said, the school and the appropriation. Appropriations are not in the general fund budget. They're separate. Okay, and that last year was a hundred, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, somewhere in there. It's close to one ninety-nine.
Jim, what's your, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Jim, what appropriations? Because I have some here.
Right at the very end of the expense account.
Yeah, I have them in the general fund though.
Well, yeah, we raised a little bit of tax for that, but that's not, I did not include those when I figured out the deficit in the general fund itself. What was it, a hundred and what is it?
One seventy-seven?
Yeah.
But to me, those are in the general fund. They're code zero.
But you've identified them in the chart of accounts to be in.
Yeah, they're in the chart of accounts. We raised a separate tax rate.
And I just put them, they are included here in what you see tonight. I just put them at the end of our fiscal year as well.
Okay.
Let me, let me just make it simple. We don't budget for appropriations.
Correct.
Not in the.
Well, I think not in the form.
No, it's in there, but we don't budget, they're all voted separately.
Correct.
Yes. I mean, it's in the chart of accounts, but you're not.
It's in there, but not.
But there is separate article accounting.
Yes, they're all separate.
But we can, we can project what's going to happen with that appropriation. We're not guessing, right? So we can't blame a two hundred thousand dollar deficit on appropriations because we don't control it. So I guess what I'm trying to get to is what created, in twenty-three, twenty-four, what created the two hundred thousand dollar deficit? And are we looking at a similar deficit this year, given the budget that we passed?
So if we pull out, and again, I have to do some research and pull some numbers, but if we pull out this two hundred thousand school and appropriation, what I'm seeing is a forty thousand dollar surplus. So I want to. So I want to just take a...
That's exactly what I've got on my sheet.
I want to take a peek at what happened at the end of the last fiscal year to give you a more accurate answer. But I don't, unless the school charged us more than they brought in, which they can then give payments after the fact as a municipal tax adjustment, based on this, I, I see a surplus. But I, I would want to do more research to be able to give you an accurate answer.
So that really is a cash flow issue, is what, is what you're saying? That appropriation difference. In other words, we're gonna hit the, again, this is me never having dealt with this kind of budget before. I've done a lot of nonprofit management, but never municipal management, and I've never had to deal with appropriations. So I'm trying to understand the fact that that 169 or whatever it is, the appropriations number, right?
177.
Thank you, the 177. That money is money that we owe...
To these organizations.
To these organizations, and do we see that money, where do we see that money coming back in?
We don't. We give it to them, and that's it.
So it's still part of our $200,000 deficit?
Correct, and again, I want to look at why, 'cause that 200, that 177 should be included in your expenses.
Uh-huh.
Because it's part of our total expenses. So if our total expenses was 472,000 over budget, again, that, the appropriation should be embedded in that expense category, so.
Well, if you look at the total expenses and the total revenue, 11 millions. Okay, the appropriations and the school are all in that.
Yep, correct.
But if you look at strictly a general fund...
Yep.
Not appropriations, not the school, just the general fund. Okay.
So my assumption is a number off with the school is what I'm...
There are.
Most probably, but I think, like, what, the classification under appropriations is just, just a classification right there. We need to go and see where the expenses are and where they're being engulfed. If the appropriations are actually being engulfed somehow in those expenses or if these are distinct.
They are distinct.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I think, there are things in the general fund budget, there were a lot more expenses than what we budgeted. If it hadn't been that way, that would have been on the revenue side.
What was that, Jim? Sorry.
I said, "There are things in the general fund that cost a lot more than what was budgeted."
Correct, budget's actual, but...
E, the attorney expense, legal fees, and the jaws of life that weren't budgeted, I think. I think all this.
Yeah, so pretty much we just have to, you have to finish the analysis of the expenses.
Correct.
And then we'll have a better position. And then going forward, you'll have the format laid out, you know what we need, and going forward.
Plug and play.
Yeah. Sure, that's exactly right.
Okay, I have one last line of questions.
Go right in.
This is a process question. All of this makes me wonder whether we have the capacity to do the kind of analysis that we're talking about in both the municipal side and the water and sewer side at our disposal with all the other things we're juggling. In other words, if it takes us nine months to try and get through these questions, we may be cutting off our nose to spite our faces, if you will, right? Like, one question I have is whether we ought to look for some grant money or some pocket of money that has been designated that could appropriately be spent here to bring in someone who can actually help us do this in an efficient and quick manner so we can get to the answers we're looking for about, about these things more quickly, as opposed to soaking Jonathan in particular, Jonathan and Jim, and the mayor, really, is what we're talking about. So I'm just asking the capacity question, really.
So I would think that the capacity is here. You want the people who have the ability to do that. This is the job, okay? This is what the job is, okay? If you're gonna eliminate anything, eliminate things that are not part of the job, okay? Go find funding for the other things. And this is what everyone's supposed to do. And this is what we need to focus on, and this is what we need to do as a top priority. And nobody who's touched the numbers more should be better equipped to do it. We've hired experts, we've elected experts, I think that's what we need to focus on. So it's easier to go and say, "What else do we need?" and find the grants and stuff like that. But right now, I think this has been going on for X amount of months because we've been looking at it slowly and starting everywhere during election, and we don't, we go in here and we hire the city manager.
Right.
But now, I think we have the experts here, and we need to do it. I think we have more transparency here on what's going on, we improve questions. And so I would say, this is your top priority.
It feels like one to me.
Okay, good. But I'm saying that's where you need to focus, is just keep this going and get this done, okay? That's my strong opinion.
I have exhausted my questions for the evening.
Okay, so now it's up to you all if you would like to bring a motion forward, or...
So, the motion would be to extend the line of credit to 2 million would be understanding that that's 1.7 million, the bank's gonna pay close attention, and it would come back to us.
1.7 stops, and the use stops, the draw stops, in that if there's a need and we're alerted that there's a need for another 100 or whatever it is to pull, we would have to make that authorization for the bank and give the authorization to the bank so we see that the council has actually said yes. Otherwise, it'll be capped at 1.7, even though there is a 2 million, but they won't release the funds until they see that there was such, you know, an election going forward.
Yeah, I'd say, make a motion to approve the 2 million, and anything over 1.7 is a provision in the council.
Right.
I'll make that motion.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
The motion and the second. Now, I'm gonna ask for any questions, but I'm going to ask you all, please, okay? Speak through me, wait till you're recognized, do not get into conversations. You can come up and make a comment, okay? Any, yes, Jim, you're up first.
I have a low voice.
That's okay, come on up and identify yourself, please.
Okay, I'm Sue Watson, on Leon's Brew Street in Newport. All the talk tonight has been about cash, so I'm assuming that both Jonathan and Jim, in their numbers, have taken out non-cash items like depreciation and any other non-cash items, so that what we're looking at is our actual cash need.
Thank you.
There is no depreciation, this is only money from the budget.
Right, exactly. Which, to your, which was removed during the budget.
Okay, great, thanks.
Lori Greb, Newport City. I have three questions. Where are we with the prison loss of income on the wa, on their water bill? That's the first one. Second one, how, where are we with the meters? And how is that gonna impact moving forward? Because from what I hear, the meter use is actually gonna lower the income. So that's what I understand, I don't know that for certain, but I guess that's gotta be figured in here for the future. And the third, and this is just from an experience with my church, what do we do with loss of water? We had a leak that was between the junction that fed my church and the meter.
Because I just want to bring this back again, because right now, we're talking about a line of credit.
Okay. Okay. I just think that some of these questions have to do with the whole financial piece and how we get...
But right now, we're just talking about the approval of a line of credit, $2 million, with the authorization, that if it goes over 1.7...
All right, thank you.
But I will say that I think it was pretty clear that the revenues will be going down once the meters, I think that was stated here. Ms. Hopkins?
Jennifer Hopkins, Newport City. Just sort of a point, which is, it was really a whole lot of numbers, and I gather you guys all have pieces of papers in front of you. It sort of would be nice, because we've got a concerned crowd who's here, if in the future, we could have copies of what was done, what we liked, what Jim presented, just as a point. That's all.
Jennifer Bierling, resident Newport, Vermont. I don't know if this is an allowable question.
Go ahead.
So, we'll see. But as a basis for this proposed line of credit, it was mentioned that there was a $400,000 loss this past year in water and sewer, and I just am curious if that $400,000 loss included depreciation? Okay, so that's a cap.
It's hot, that, those were all removed.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any further questions?
Sort of to, partly asked, so let me...
Well, go ahead.
Karen Lance, Newport. The account of the prison, which is a significantly large account, if that had been billed correctly and we had been receiving the money that we would expect to, what would that do to the 400,000 deficit? And please note that this was more than one year. And in the same theme, was a ghost employee somehow embedded in that water system?
So, thank you, thank you for that. So, and I'm gonna keep it back down to this line of credit right now, but I am going to say that it was, it's clear that the revenues are being looked at and these expenses are going to be looked at, and the city manager is going to be working with me to look at those. So we have a hit list of all those issues brought up, and all the issues that were brought up over this time period. We have a, a list that we're working on, so that's how we're going to get to those numbers. But right now, we just want to focus on the motion at hand, the second. Any further questions here?
Interest payment on the 800,000? Do we know what that is?
The interest payment on the 800,000 dollars?
I don't know, right, but for the whole year, the interest costs $36,000. That's from July 1 to December 1. You know, it breaks down for 100,000.
Of course.
I can make comments, but everybody can have one if they want.
I would sit, hang on, until we have all our numbers together, and so that we don't have drafts.
Give me the final one, Jim.
Come on. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post a nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is adjourned.
My appreciation, Madam Mayor. I just, just for my own sanity, I'd like to hear the, the motion again. Would you send it to me?
You can do that.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you, council, members of the public. Next item on the agenda is comments by members of the public. Please, once again, when your, when your name is called, please come up. You all have designated time to speak, and please speak through the mayor. Do not engage in competition, speak through the mayor. Members of the audience are reminded that members of the press are present and that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcast over the city's cable television channel. Members of the audience are further reminded that Newport City Council meetings are for the purpose of allowing council members to conduct city business. City council meetings are the only time the city council discusses, deliberates, and decides upon city matters. City council meetings are held in public to promote transparency and accountability between government, but are distinct from public hearings or town meetings in that they are not meetings of the public. Members of the public shall be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express opinions about matters considered by the city council. To conduct orderly and efficient meetings, I kindly request the public's cooperation and compliance with the published guidelines when participating in the meeting. And I thank you, because I know that is what I want. So, the city manager will do two minutes, and as we get to the 32nd time, I'm gonna... Ms. Barnes?
Good to meet you, Barnes, Newport. This is painful to watch and painful to be here. This did not happen over the last four months. This has been a long time coming, and many of us had asked for open and transparent discussions during the last city council. Mr. Bashan, Mr. Charbonneau, they were sitting at the table, and we asked for these discussions. We were dismissed and ridiculed, and I know that because I went to Laura Dolgan's debriefs after each meeting, which I doubt were highly publicized, but as mayor, I was invited to one until I actually said something such as, "I value all the opinions of everyone in the city." After my first debrief, I was uninvited to any further debriefs. These debriefs should not have even been happening. They were heinous, behind closed doors, and if anyone ever wants to know the gory details, I would be happy to tell you. I want to thank Mayor Sullivan. I am so glad to see you sitting at this table, strong enough to lead these discussions that we have been craving and have not gotten. We asked, and no one at the table listened to us. Thank you, Mr. Upper Chase, for your very intelligent questions and for being brave enough to ask them and brave enough to say, "I don't understand." When I said, "As mayor, I don't understand," I was told by Laura Dolgan, "You don't need to understand." I want to thank Hart Curtis for being the only one that supported me in any way as mayor. Everyone else remained silent. Thank you so much, Mayor Sullivan, for what you're doing. Please keep asking questions, and for those who do not discuss at the council table, please discuss the issues, because we want to know that you understand and you care.
Thank you for the comment. Ms. Lance?
And that's City of Newport, what she said. And on steroids. It has been really challenging for all of us to have asked repeatedly for specific information about particular accounts, and some of you sat here during that time and blew us off, and that was never okay. So I also appreciate that we're not being blown off currently, but the issues are there and they could have been dealt with a long time ago. If, if it had been possible for citizens to ask questions, to make comments, without getting their heads handed together. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Hopkins?
Jennifer Hopkins, Newport City. I put down the agenda, and I'll stick to the agenda. One of the things, and this is a follow-up to my other comment, it's interesting that we have had for years, in the spirit of transparency, a copy of the city budget, the expenditures to date, in usually the beginning council meeting. There has not been one since May, so when I decided to sort of look and say, "Okay, how are we doing in the city?", I found that I had May, you know, the one that came in May, which was April, so we should say April 30th, which left me with two months of not knowing the, the standing of the city. As an ex-city council member, I found that difficult. I assumed that the council had seen those budgets. I certainly hope so after this discussion about increasing borrowing. And for anybody cares, back in my day, which... And for anybody cares, back in my day, which was, we now know, 40 years ago, we did do arbitrage. It was, it was very big at that point. We stopped because of the interest rates. And obviously, only recently have the interest rates come down to make it worthwhile. So it is a worthwhile expenditure.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Ms. Bierling?
Jennifer Bierling, resident Newport, Vermont. I don't agree that the salaries are the big chunk. I think the problem is much more extensive than that. I do agree with the mayor and her supporters that the problems with the water and sewer funds date back to about 2018, when the former city manager Laura Dogan started to migrate expenses from the general fund to the water and sewer funds so as to backfill the surplus that existed in the water and sewer funds at that time, rather than refunding money to taxpayers. However, I alerted Mayor Sullivan on August 7th, the day of her very first council meeting, that these issues existed. And I sent her an email with water and sewer questions. And I requested to meet with her and the interim city manager, given that the city manager constructs those budgets. The mayor refused to meet with me if the interim city manager was present. And I sent 10 emails total, asking for an explanation for the refusal, and none was supplied. I also asked the mayor to use her accounting and forensic auditing skills to conduct an internal forensic audit of the water and sewer funds. And the mayor responded by delivering rants at the September 6th, September 18th, and October 2nd council meetings to paint me as incompetent in making unreasonable requests. The mayor claimed that an internal audit is for compliance and controls, which is exactly what we need in the water and sewer funds. The mayor then promised to do a deep dive into the funds. To my knowledge, that never happened. For months, nothing happened. At the December 11th, 2023 council meeting, wherein the council was actually reviewing the water and sewer fund budgets, the mayor had no answers to the questions about the apportionment of water and sewer expenses. The mayor eventually stated that individuals whose salaries were split between the general fund were going to keep timesheets. However, that's for use in the fiscal year 2526 budget, and not the 2425. The council passed the 2425 budget with no systemic changes, none. And I think if you started to dive into this stuff at the line item level, you're gonna see there was a mass migration of things like equipment expenses, parts, labor. I wouldn't be surprised to find a snowplow in there, to be quite frank. And that's the level of attention that it needs.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Earl?
Hi. I'm Anne Shirello, I'm a resident of Newport. I wanna address two things, just briefly. $1.5 million loan that is claimed that water and sewer owes to the general fund from the past, however many years that is. It would not be right to begin to take that part of the loan unless you did a deep dive and figured out whether or not the salaries that have been shifted, or appropriately shifted, in all those years. Don't say water and sewer owes that much money until you find out whether or not they were properly being billed for that. It's probably way less if you make that analysis. If you wanna go back, then at least go back with respect to those expenses. The second thing that I wanted to say, sorry, I had my sunglasses on. The second thing I wanted to say was more general, and that is, you know, we're gonna be looking possibly for TIF money. And you're gonna need the citizens of this town to think that they have confidence in the way that you can analyze the situation and appropriately budget for success. And looking at the past, that hasn't happened. And what I think you need generally now is for a cooperation of the citizens, but of the employees, the department heads. Because you have to realize that even in this budget that's starting up now, some of the income that you might have written down that you were gonna get, you're not gonna get. And some of the expenses that you predicted were gonna be, what they were, are gonna be larger than they are expected to be. And in order to get a balance, everybody in the staff has to think, can I, do I really have to spend up to the limit of my expenses? Or is there someplace that I can cut? And I do that if I'm a department head, because I want the city to succeed and I want it to look good at the end of this year. And if I see, with respect to income, that the income's not coming in from some source, I don't just sit on it. I, I tell the people that are responsible above me about it. And if nothing happens, I make sure it gets to the, close to the top, so that we get all the income we should get, and we start lowering our expenses a little bit so we look like a city that cares about getting it right. And then we can go, we can be confident that when we're asked to come up with money, to be willing to take a loan to support, to support, let's say, stuff with the hole or anywhere else in the city, that people are confident and would be willing to do that. Otherwise, it's not gonna happen.
Thank you for your comment.
Donna Marie Konstantinou, Newport resident. Sometimes I can't read my own writing, so, bear with me. I'm respectfully asking the city council of Newport City to censure Councilman Charbonneau. I find his filing of a police report akin to making a mountain out of a mo-hill at the expense of Councilman Curtis. The 30-day appointment was rectified and amended and resolved very quickly. Furthermore, the allegations lobbed at Mr. Curtis, whether true or not, are irrelevant to his performance as a city council member. It is a character assassination, pure and simple. Creating all this drama hurts the city. And if you had attended the meeting when St. Aldens came to speak with us, they said they deal with stuff in private, and they move the city ahead. Creating all this drama hurts the city. I am asking the council to embrace a moral backdrop and stand up against this character assassination. The body of past council members have illustrated inability to stand up to bullies effectively. Please be strong, stand strong, and carry out your duties as you carry out your duties. I'm asking you to do what is right. Censor Mr. Charbonneau, please. Silence is complicity.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Oh, sir.
So, I happened to read on Facebook, something that Lori put in. And she mentioned the president may not be paying attention to a couple of accounts. I assumed you were referring to water and sewer. I assumed, I assumed that. Believe me, I paid close attention to that. And if I wasn't paying attention, I wouldn't know that we needed to raise the rates going back six or seven years. So, I didn't know, and I told the appropriate people all about it. So, done my diligence on that. And the other thing was inappropriate use of funds. I don't know what that would be. To my knowledge, there's not any appropriate use of funds anywhere in the city. So, just wanted to comment on that, don't mind. As far as water and sewer goes, you know, the mayor asked me for opinion on the rates. I did it. It's not up to me to set the rates, that's a council job. You know, we, we don't approve the rates, we don't approve the budgets. My office has nothing to do with the treasure of water and sewer budgets at all. And just to prove that, I've been harping on that, about water and sewer fund going to the general fund for years and years. And council has to make that decision when they do it. I notify the appropriate people, everybody knows about it. And, you know, all we do downstairs, we pay the bills, it comes down, quoted by department heads in the manager's office, and we take in everything. That's, that's what we do downstairs. We don't make any decisions. I, I don't make decisions, I don't wanna make decisions that these people are supposed to be making. That's council job. All I do is forward information. I can tell you where we stand, there's a line of credit. And that's my due diligence, and letting everybody know where we stand.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing the information whenever we ask the questions. Okay, so now we are going to, still new business. Okay. President Affichan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes. Fourth of July was well-attended in the city. The city looked good, had a lot of great comments from the public. And I think we had a great firework this morning. I wanna thank everyone involved.
Very fun, it's locked up. He was busy.
Yep. Just wanna thank everyone involved.
Yeah. Councilmember Uffer Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
Oh.
Wait a minute.
You gotta sign one more. Sorry.
Oh, okay, so this is the, actually you corrected it. Okay. This is the, why, great. Thank you. If you have any... Okay. Next item on the list is all business. President Affichan?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Charbonneau?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Uffer Chase?
No, thank you.
Treasurer Johnson?
No.
You ready? Okay, you ready? Set. Right here, right, just a sec. May I have a motion to adjourn this special council meeting at 7:23?
So.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you, everybody.